Okay, 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Town administrator, if I can have the roll call.
Do you pledge your... I'm sorry. Sorry. You used to Travis is backwards.
Okay. Getting the tape recorder to come on. Vice Mayor Dave Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph Shepherd.
Here.
Commissioner Alan Offenly.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan LaShir.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all of the elected members are in attendance with the exception of Mr. Mayor Travis Marion, who has a medical emergency and excused absence.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for those in Louisiana in the flooding and all those in harm's way, both overseas and abroad, or I guess that's actually the same, here and abroad, and... We're going to start with approval of town meeting minutes. We actually, on the agenda, have none, but we do have completed minutes for August 8th of 2016. Everyone wants to review those real quick.
It's removed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town administrator, do we have any executive sessions?
No.
Okay. I don't think so. Public presentation, the Resolution 2016-10. I think it's actually supposed to be 2016. Oh, it is 2016, that, 10. Debt service assessment exceptions or exemptions. A resolution modifying the parameters for the collection of the debt service tax that was recently enacted under Resolution 2016-7, whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland is a municipality organized under the provisions of the Maryland Constitution and governed under the provisions of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas the mayor and commissioners recently developed and adopted an annual operating budget for primary governmental and proprietary fund activity for fiscal year 2017, which included a new debt service and utility tax assessment, whereas the debt service and utility tax is a flat assessment on all properties in order to cover the costs related to town hall buildings, vehicles, streets and sidewalk restorations, and whereas this assessment shall be borne equally by all taxable properties within the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun regardless of the type of service provided and the level of access of the, or the current lack or need for any or all such services at this time, and whereas it has come to the attention of the mayor and commissioners that some properties have unique circumstances that lead to the unintended consequences of the property owner paying more than one assessment beyond what was the original intent, whereas the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wish to modify and clarify the original intent of this assessment and do so as follows. Effective September 1st, 2016, the town will notify the county tax assessment office in writing and take the necessary steps to identify exempt and remove properties from the special assessment rules that have the following characteristics. Any unimproved taxable property that in itself is not large enough to support the construction of a primary structure or does not meet the minimum setback or building envelope requirements for a structure in accordance to the standards and codes set forth within the zoning district that the property is located shall be exempt and not subject to the assessment. However, this exemption shall be null and void if the property secures a variance from the board, town board of zoning appeals to permit improvements to the property, or if such other improvements are made to the property that substantially increase the assessed value of the property. Two, any taxable parcel, or I'm sorry, any taxable property that has a building or structure that extends across multiple tax parcels and is owned by the same exact person or entity and could never be deeded or sold as an independent property due to the sharing of the same building or structure. However, this exemption shall be null and void if the shared building or structure is removed and the individual tax parcel is no longer encumbered by such shared building or structure. Three, any unimproved property that is landlocked with no independent access to a public way without the use of a right-of-way. However, this exemption shall be null and void if the lot in question shall be substantially improved or if access to a public way is secured by easement across another property. Therefore, be it further resolved that upon proof of payment by October 31st, 2016, the town will reimburse the owner of any property described above that has already paid the above debt service assessment. Now, therefore, be it further resolved and acted, the mayor and commissioners have passed, approved and adopted this resolution on 23rd day of August 2016. Do I have a motion?
It's removed.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, or, I'm sorry, any comments?
No comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner LaShir, ordinance 2016-04.
All right. Got two different ordinances to introduce. You know, when I ran for office, Commissioner Warnock and I knocked on about 80 percent of the doors within town limits. Would you say that's about accurate?
About accurate.
I know. We ended up talking to a lot of people. And one, we heard a lot of different things, and one overriding complaint we heard from most of our residents that we met was just basically how, you know, some of the properties in town are rundown, how some properties are unsafe within town limits. You know, and since then, we've, you know, collectively, we've all heard the complaints from many of our residents and business owners continuing, you know, to voice their concerns along that. I mean, typical complaints could be high grass, vehicles parked in yard, unsafe buildings, trash and debris that's, you know, around homes, different things like that. You know, fortunately, we've got a lot of different residents and business owners that take great pride in their houses in Rising Sun. I mean, if you talk to different real estate agents and developers, I mean, Rising Sun is where everybody still wants to move, you know, regardless of anything, but it doesn't take much to just walk around and, you know, you see, you know, a lack of civic pride in some cases, and I'm actually quoting that out of the Herald, because if everybody saw the recent article in the Herald with "The sun is in sad shape," it details some of the deteriorating conditions around there. You know, and having our own police department, you get to interact and talk with the police department, and the one thing about police officers is they, you know, part of their job is to go into buildings, they go into apartments, they walk around stuff, they go up and down steps, you know, they see things, and they're safety-minded individuals, and I'll quote Chip Peterson with that comment, that, you know, they, they see things most of us ignore. You know, they walk up and they'll routinely repeat when they walk up steps that are rickety. You know, they'll walk into a house and the floor moves, different things like that, obvious unsafe conditions, code violations, some of these are, you know, could be rental properties, they could be owner-occupied properties. And you just look across the street from town hall, and I mean, you see some of the, you know, the conditions. You know, we've had a lot of different infill through town with businesses, but we still struggle with just right across, you know, from our own town hall what things look like. So, part and parcel, I mean, the way the town looks and for properties being safe and people to have a good place to live, I mean, that's all part with economic development to make businesses and want to move to town, people to have events here, you know, and all that. And in December, if you remember, we passed the property maintenance ordinance, and that was to get things started, to give us some tools to actually start, you know, address some of these issues and properties. The next step, because we talked about it then and we extensively talked about it during the budget process, was to do a property transfer and resale inspection program along with a rental inspection program. And part of that is, you know, it's kind of like the belt and suspenders approach to property maintenance as far as, you know, where the town of Rising Sun, everybody generally has a lot of civic pride, and you know, it's, and nobody wants to live any place that has deteriorating properties. So, I'll go ahead and start with the first ordinance. Ordnance of the town of Rising Sun, Town Cecil County, Maryland, amending the general laws of the town of Rising Sun by amending and adding language to Article 2 of Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Rising Sun and deleting or repealing certain articles and provisions in conflict therewith in order, within order, within, in order incorporate a new Chapter 8 into the previously adopted property maintenance code in order to create a property transfer resale inspection program and to repeal any and all other ordinances and parts of the ordinances in conflict therewith. Whereas the Code of Ordinances of the town contains Chapter 5 titled Building and Housing Regulations, which contains Article 2 titled Property Maintenance Minimum Housing and Quality of Life Code, which establishes minimum requirements of standards for premises, structures, equipment and facilities for light, ventilation, space heating, sanitation, protection from the elements, life safety, safety from fire and other hazards, and for safe and sanitary maintenance, the responsibility of owners, operators and occupants, the occupancy of existing structures and premises, to preserve the peace, harmony and tranquility of the community, and whereas the mayor and commissioners have recently identified trends showing significant declines in assessed property values in the town of Rising Sun, and whereas the decline of property values is directly tied to the decline and decay of a community, which evolves into loss of financial equity for homeowners and loss of financial resources for the town to continue to provide needed services for the community, and whereas for every 10 percent loss in property values, there is a $10,000 loss of financial equity for every $100,000 or appraised property value, which is a direct financial impact for all Rising Sun property owners. These losses create apprehension and loss of new investments in the community, thereby making the community stagnant and unsustainable economically, and whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize their role as shepherds and gatekeepers of the public trust and the investments made by property owners, and that ignoring the trend lines will only cause greater decline in the economic opportunities of families that have chosen to call Rising Sun home and the businesses that are investing all of their resources into this community only to see the value of return when their investment is greatly diminished. Whereas appraisals and assessed values of properties are directly tied to market sales and therefore properties that are offered for sale that also have significant property maintenance issues or unsafe or sanit, unsanitary will typically sell for less than market value, which in turn drives market values down community-wide. This leads to declines in appraisal and assessed value, which results in a direct impact to property owners and businesses as detailed above, and whereas roughly 50 or more properties are sold in Rising Sun each year, but are more importantly, they are currently sold without any efforts to comply with any recognized property maintenance codes and are essentially fostering a trend line of declining property values passed on to the next owner without the correction of any property maintenance issues, which affects everyone's property values, and whereas the mayor and commissioners find it vitally important to the future of the town of Rising Sun that these properties be brought into compliance with basic property maintenance codes and standards prior to sale, as such wish to hereby create a resale inspection program as spelled to achieve this goal. Now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the town commissioners of the town of Rising Sun Cecil County, Maryland, it is hereby enacted and ordained by its authority that Chapter 5 of the town code shall be modified as follows. Section 1, Article 2 titled Property Maintenance Minimum Housing and Quality of Life of Chapter 5, Edition 2016-1, shall be modified by adding a new Chapter 8 titled Property Transfer Resale Inspection Program to the town's property maintenance, minimum housing and quality of life code, and furthermore, adopt the terms and provision as set out in this new chapter of which one copy is hereby attached to this ordinance and will be made part of the revised document titled The Town of Rising Sun Property Maintenance Minimum Housing and Quality of Life Code, Edition 2016-2. Section 2, all ordinances or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed, rescinded, canceled and annulled. Section 3, should any provision, section, paragraph or subparaphrase of this ordinance, including any code or text adopted hereby, be declared null and void, illegal, unconstitutional or otherwise determined to be unenforceable for a court having jurisdiction, the same shall not affect the validity, legality or enforceability of any other provision section.
Excuse me. Charlie, are you... Thank you. I'd like to read it all.
Thank you.
Hang on, I lost my place.
Top page, top page three.
Top of the next, last page.
All right. Paragraph or subparagraph hereof, including any code, text adopted hereby, the town of Rising Sun hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance, and each section, subsection, clause or phrase thereof, irrespective of the fact that any or more sections, subsections, sentences, clauses and phrases be declared null and void, illegal, unconstitutional or otherwise determined to be unenforceable, each such provision, section, paragraph or subparagraph is expressly declared to be and is deemed severable. That nothing in this ordinance, section four, excuse me, section four, nothing, that nothing in this ordinance hereby adopted shall be construed to affect any suit or proceeding impending in any court, or any rights required or liability incurred, or any cause or causes of action acquired or existing under any act or ordinance hereby repealed as cited in Section 2 of this ordinance, nor shall any just or legal right or remedy of any character be lost, impaired or affected by this ordinance. Section 5, that the Rising Sun town clerk is hereby ordered and directed to cause this ordinance to be published in newspaper and general circulation, section 6, now therefore be it further resolved that this ordinance was introduced on this 23rd day of August 2016. Section 8.
Okay.
Okay. Pretty much. Okay. And that's just for introduction tonight. We don't do anything other with that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Commissioner LaShir, it might be when you do the 2016-05, sections 2 through, well, whatever, are all the boilerplate templates. You can probably avoid reading all of that again.
That sounds great.
Are they on the website yet? They will be...
I was waiting to say two things. Yes, they will be, but secondly, you need to make a motion to officially enter that into the record.
I'm sorry. Does anybody move to, or make a motion to enter that into the record?
I'll make a motion. We enter that into the record.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At the very end of that, does it say when you're voting on that? It'll be the next meeting would be the earliest we can vote on it. Which is a month from now? No, no, it'd be...
Two weeks.
Yeah, the second, the second Tuesday in...
September.
So, all ordinances are the following meetings, so, yeah, the 30th... Wait, is it a date on there? Can they scroll down to see that date? No, we have the 27th of September on there.
Because by law, an ordinance can sit for 60 days.
Yeah.
And so, the number, we're completing the ordinance, you guys can wait 60 days to do it. So, that, that date could change, but right now, you're scheduled to, you are scheduled, unless you change otherwise, to consider adopting this on the 27th.
Yeah, I think the original conversations was to hold this over until the end of September.
Because we'll need the time to discuss it in session.
In case anybody wants to discuss this one or the other ordinance, to give them...
The earliest we can ever vote on ordinance is the following regular meeting, but, so... Commissioner LaShir, would you like to read ordinance 2016-05? Into the record.
Yes. Ordinance number 2016-05, Town of Rising Sun Cecil County, Maryland, ordinance of the town of Rising Sun, Town Cecil County, Maryland, amending the general laws of the town of Rising Sun by amending and adding language to Article 2 of Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Rising Sun and deleting and repealing certain articles and provisions in conflict therewith in order incorporate a new Chapter 9 into the previously adopted property maintenance code in order to create a rental inspection program and to repeal any and other ordinances and parts of the ordinances in conflict therewith. Whereas the Code of Ordinances of the town contains Chapter 5 titled Building and Housing Regulations, which contains Article 2 titled Property Maintenance Minimum Housing and Quality of Life Code, which establishes minimum requirements and standards for premises, structures, equipment and facilities for light, ventilation, space heating, sanitation, protection from the elements, life safety, safety from fire and other hazards, and for safe and sanitary maintenance, the responsibilities of owners, operators and occupants, the occupancy of existing structures and premises, to preserve the peace, harmony and tranquility of the community, and whereas the mayor and commissioners have recently identified trends showing significant declines in assessed property values in the town of Rising Sun, and whereas the decline of property values is directly tied to the decline and decay of a community, which evolves into loss of financial equity for homeowners and loss of financial resources for the town to continue to provide needed services for the community, and whereas more importantly, rental properties make up a very important housing component and play a vital role in making the community more attractive for residential living, and whereas tenants and occupants of rental properties have a reasonable expectation to have a safe and healthy dwelling unit in which to reside, raise a family and live, or conduct a business in a property that is safe for public occupancy and the transaction of business, and whereas there are nearly roughly 350 or more properties and dwelling units that are, are offered for rent each year in Rising Sun, but unfortunately, many are not complying with any recognized property maintenance codes and are the source of multiple complaints from adjoining property owners, and the source of increased law enforcement activity related to illegal activities and disturbances due in large part to absentee landlords that do not properly monitor the activities of their tenants, and whereas our police are reporting numerous instances where the conditions of occupancy related to the rental units is substandard, unsafe and unsanitary in many instances, and whereas appaisals and assessed values of properties are directly tied to market sales, and therefore properties that are offered for sale are, excuse me, are located near properties that have significant property maintenance issues or unsafe or unsanitary will typically sell for and/or appraised for less due to the uncapped property, which in turn drives market values down. This leads to declines in appraisal and assessed values, which results in a direct impact to property owners and business alike, and whereas the residents of Rising Sun have routinely spoken about the negative impacts that this property, that these properties are having on the community and have requested the mayor and commissioners to take action, and whereas the mayor and commissioners find it vitally important to the future of the town of Rising Sun that these properties be brought into compliance with basic property maintenance codes and standards, and to ensure that occupants of such rental properties are living and, or working in conditions that meet minimum property maintenance standards for basic equipment and facilities used for light, ventilation, heat and sanitation for rental units and premises, and for the safe and sanitary maintenance of rental units and premises, meet minimum requirements for rental units and premises for means of egress, fire protection systems and other equipment and devices necessary for safety from fire, fix and establish the responsibilities of property owners, operators and tenants of rental units and premises, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the town commissioners of the town of Rising Sun Cecil County, Maryland, and it is hereby enacted and ordained by its authority that Chapter 5 of the town code shall be modified as follows.
Just read section 1.
Thank you. Section 1, Article 2 titled Property Maintenance Minimum Housing and Quality of Life of Chapter 5, Edition 2016-1, shall be modified by adding a new Chapter 9 titled Rental Inspection Program to the town's property maintenance, minimum housing and quality of life code, and furthermore, adopt the terms and provision as set out in this new chapter of which one copy is hereby attached to this ordinance and will be made a part of the revised document titled The Town of Rising Sun Property Maintenance Minimum Housing and Quality of Life Code, Edition 2016-2.
Do I have a motion to enter this into the record?
I'll make a motion to enter this into the record.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner LaShir, you have a business meeting item here.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Some regards to the town hall hours of operation. Currently, the, the current staff we're utilizing from Wagner and Associates, we shut down for lunch and we've been discussing eliminating that to have a solid schedule from morning to the afternoon. The one thing that's been proposed is to have town hall open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Just wonder if there's any discussion on that. One of the thinkings is the, you know, if it's providing that you don't close for lunch, then people know you're here, and they don't have to guess when the town hall will be open.
They can come on their lunch hour to do business. Do we need to put this in a motion to change the hours?
Yeah, I'd like you to.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt changing the hours of business in town hall from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except for holidays.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have citizens input, and the first person that wanted to give input is Mr. William Cathar, or Cathar.
My name is William Cathar. I live in Rising Sun. Stevens Drive. I came here tonight with the intent not to speak, but I had several thoughts throughout the day. I said, well, I'll run them past you guys, and I just had another thought. Could you possibly read the portion of the 2016-... What was it? 10?
10.
Again, that seems to key on 2016-07.
Just because 2016-07 is where we initially...
I know, I know, but it appears the language has changed in the properties that are going to be assessed, the special tax.
I have it here if you want to read it, but I can, I mean...
Just real quick, the types of properties that were going, you have to read the whole thing.
What section?
The types of properties that were going to be assessed.
Any unimproved...
Particularly the ones that were not encumbered.
Any unimproved tax properties that in itself is not large enough to support the construction of a primary structure or does not meet the minimum setback or building envelope requirement for a structure in accordance to standards and codes set forth within the zoning district that the property is located shall be exempt and not subject to the assessment. However, this exemption shall be null and void if the property secures a variance from the town's board of zoning appeals to permit improvement to the property, or if any other such improvements are made to the property that substantially increase the assessed value of the property. Any taxable property that has a building or structure that extends across multiple tax parcels and is owned by the same exact person or entity and could never be deeded or sold as independent property due to the sharing of the same building or structure, however, this exemption shall be null and void if the shared building or structure is removed and the individual tax parcel is no longer encumbered by such shared buildings or structures. Any unimproved property that is landlocked with no independent access to a public way without the use of a right-of-way, however, this exemption shall be null and void if the lot in question shall be substantially improved or if access to a public way is secured by easement across another property.
Was there a section in there that, that maybe it was prior to what you just read that were not, properties were not served by...
It says regardless of, let's see, whereas the assessment shall be borne equally by all taxable properties within the incorporated town of Rising Sun, limited to the type of service provided, level of service or current lack or need of any of all such services at this time.
That doesn't jive with what the original resolution said. I mean, you're saying now, you're backing up and saying that all properties, regardless of the type of service that was or was not provided? Because that's not in here. That's not the original resolution. Well, in any, in any event, the last town meeting, you gave me... I'm done?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like a fire alarm. I thought it was a pager. You might have had it.
We have a long list, sir. Next person is Elsie... Huh? He asked me to. I offered to let, afterwards. Elsie Devilia...
I prefer to be to the mayor's side.
Jeffrey Jackson.
Jeffrey Jackson, 119 Cooper Avenue. I appreciate the work that the town has put into solving the debt service issue, but I feel just to relieve the spider properties is not necessarily enough. The town's position on this from the beginning and stated numerous times with that, that was that this is the same money just being collected differently. The transfer of the trash service fee, the water service fee and the sewer... Jeffrey Jackson, one nineteen Cooper Avenue. I appreciate the work that the town has put into solving the debt service issue, but I feel just to relieve the spite, spider properties is not necessarily enough. The town's position on this from the beginning and stated numerous times with that, that was that this is the same money just being collected differently. The transfer of the trash service fee, the water service fee, and the sewer service fee to the property tax bill to offer relief to town utility customers was commendable. But if you have an unimproved property or have a house in town with your own well and septic, the debt service fee is not the same money and is an unfair burden to these property owners. The ordinance, I feel, has not been implemented as it has been described on numerous occasions. If a property does not get a town utility bill, then that property should not be charged a debt service fee on that property's tax bill. The town should have raised the property tax rate. That is the only fair way to tax property owners. There are many unimproved properties in Rising Sun that have been waiting on utility service for a decade or more. Today, they are still waiting and now are also being forced to help pay for the services that they do not receive. Thank you.
Ms. Carol Presnell?
Carol Presnell, three eighty-seven Joseph Biggs Memorial Highway. I just wanted to mention that we've been living here in Rising Sun since nineteen ninety-two, and we have been paying town taxes. We do not get sewer, we do not get the water, we don't get anything, and we're still paying town taxes. And we've been there since nineteen ninety-two. And I should have been coming up here earlier, a lot, many years earlier, but I'm just getting to the point to where my husband and I are retired, he's out on disability and all, and it's like, why should I be paying town taxes when the town does not do anything for me? Thank you.
Mr. Bill Barr?
I just got two, two quick questions, one involving the new water supply. What happens if we go into a drought? Are we, want to still get the water from Chester County Water Authority? If we get their hookup?
I can answer that really quickly, but any other water questions we'll have to carry over for tomorrow night. On the allocation from Chester Water, I mean, is, for us, is up to a peak of one point eight million gallons a day, and they pull water from two different sources, and they can pull up to sixty million gallons a day. Currently, they can pull water from thirty million from the Ocde Raro and also thirty million from the Susquehanna River.
Okay, so you're saying it's guaranteed that we'll get, keep water?
Correct. They've got guaranteed minimums to supply.
Okay. Second question, Chief. Curfew. Ten o'clock? Weekdays? Weekend? Okay. Got a question.
Are you experiencing something?
Yeah, I know we've had over the summer, we've had kids around. Yeah, well, every day up, out after ten. Some kids are out there until twelve o'clock in the morning playing. So, okay, that's all I have.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment tonight? Brenda Mayner?
Oh, I'm sorry, do you? I have one more quick question.
Okay.
The, I saw that there was money that's going to be allotted to fix the area down of Valley View.
Are you talking about from the water main break?
Yes.
I'll be talking about that.
When?
When we get to my section, I'll be talking about that.
Okay, I was wondering because there's a.
Good news.
Yeah, a dip going down in there.
Okay, yeah.
Are you done?
The maintenance code and the rental code and all like that, who will be enforcing that? I mean, like, if we call up here and say, this is the problem we have, who's going to be taking care of it?
That will be a town employee with the budget. We actually allocated funds in September to hire somebody specifically to take care of the property maintenance code and the inspections. Those are actually separate from all the inspections that Calvin does. I mean, I guess you kind of look at it as Calvin does the, or town administrator, the higher level, more technical inspections, the permits, all that stuff, whether somebody's putting in a business, you know, the fire systems and to make sure that's code, but we'll have an individual strictly just dedicated to this.
Okay. And talking about the curfew, they got the mindset down there that there's no going, nobody be, none of the police officers will be coming down to get them. Because I've talked to some of the children, and I've gotten some really filthy language out of their mouth, but they told me that nobody can touch them, nobody can do anything to them.
Sounds like the gauntlet was dropped.
Sounds like it there.
And Mr., have you heard anything going on about my backyard, about the water?
It's been discussed, Brenda, with the engineers who were down there. KCI, you remember when I was out there talking to you about it? Do I have a resolution to it yet? No, but we're on the same page. So hopefully, I mean, you and I talked that it's building up right there at the sidewalk, and we're going to see what we can do about that.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay. Anybody else?
I said nineteen ninety-two, it's nineteen eighty-two.
Okay. Yes.
So through the video. It's, it's for the video.
Hi, folks. Hi. I'm Stuart Wilson. I own property on Biggs Highway, and I've talked to Calvin a few times. And I put my property into the town limit right at the end of the big boom, and then there was a big boom, and everything went down. But I just kind of heard about the deal with the taxes and stuff through the friends of mine and through the Cecil League. I don't get any water or sewer out there, and I've been paying taxes now probably eight or nine years because I got to put it in, put into the town expecting Knutson to develop and that to be the access, my property into there. So I don't think that it's quite fair. I've been paying taxes for basically, like this young lady says, for some time with the anticipation of it paying off for me down the road. And the, the previous commissioners said, just to be patient, if I was willing to be patient, they would have water and sewer for me. So I kind of don't think it's really fair that I, that do not get any water or sewage, that I would get charged extra now for water and sewer when I don't even use the water and sewer from the town. Unless you're planning on running it out to me really soon for free, I'd be glad to pay taxes then. And I'm not being smart aleck, I'm just saying, if that develops soon, that's wonderful. But I don't think it's fair to anybody that if they're not using the water and sewer that they should have to pay for water and sewer services. And I, for one, haven't really gotten anything out of my taxes for the last eight or nine years, other than the hope that someday my property might increase in value when the water and sewer gets there. But anyhow, I know you guys make tough decisions, but I hope you consider fairness for, for all people when it comes to this situation. And one other thing, you mentioned on there, and this is a concern for me because I am a landlord, and, but I try to keep my property up pretty nicely. Says something about fire, and I know in the, in the, in the county now, you now have to, when you build a new house, you have to put water sprinkler systems in, which are extremely expensive, and I think pose a problem down the road for potential flooding of a house down the road. And I'm hoping that you're not putting that in there with the wording the way it is, such that down the road, we have to put fire systems in existing homes. I'm hoping that just the traditional smoke detectors are sufficient, that you don't, this regulation that you're putting in would somehow impact older homes that you have to stick a new system in. Because it's really expensive.
Yeah, I'll try and take a crack at that, and feel free to correct me, Calvin, if I mess this up. The, the idea, it wouldn't be to have anybody have to retrofit anything if it, if it doesn't need to comply with those standards. Like, if you have an old house or a building, if it doesn't need to require to have a fire sprinkler system, you wouldn't have to do that, of course, unless the state came along and made something mandatory, but that's out of our control. So nobody would be looking for a few on property in town to, to force you to put in a sprinkler system. I think that's in there for, like, if there's one currently, it would have to be maintained.
Okay. So it would require it such as?
Correct.
You know, Maple Heights Apartments or? Right. It was just the worry. It was kind of, it's a little vague, which leaves a good bit of leeway.
Something we, I mean, yeah, we, we have some time to discuss that. I was thinking of that too, honestly. Yes, Mr. Ford?
I didn't sign up.
That's fine.
Kind of not used to this. But I'm Bob Ford, and I have property here in town. Most of you know me. I want to commend you for acting on, on this property maintenance issue in town. One thing that it didn't talk about that I want to bring up is that poorly ran properties and rundown properties attract poorly, poorly low-quality citizens. And that's what we have in Rising Sun, in a lot of these properties. The bottom denominator in the whole country is drug problems, and I don't know what the answer to that is, but it's, it's here, it's everywhere. And the incident we had the other night over here at nineteen East Cherry Street kept these gentlemen up for four hours, middle of the night, and, and me, but they, they took care of the problem. The first person was stealing electric from me, had a warrant out for his arrest, so he was in jail up in Chester County. And two nights later, the same apartment was stealing electric from me, and it turned out to be a bunch of rugrats that were living there. And understand, I didn't get in. When they finally got the search warrant to get in, I didn't get in, but I heard it was a pretty deplorable condition. From water being shut off, electric being shut off, human feces everywhere, drugs, needles, all of that type of thing everywhere, and that's right out my back door. So the, the problem with this is the, the leadership and the, who's going to, great question, who's going to be the inspector, who's going to administer this, who's going to enforce it? I have property in Newark, Delaware as well, they've got the same issues. College students are, are, are pretty hard people to rent to, and the only reason I have property is because I have a, a business that these properties surround, and I've collected these properties to try to protect my business. I just can't collect it all. So in Newark, the problem they've had, they have inspections, they have rental permits, we have to pay a rental permit fee to rent a property. They have inspectors that come out every year to inspect. The landlord association, which I'm not part of, has sued the city over many issues. The one problem that they have is that they, they don't have access to the properties on inspections. I didn't learn this, for twenty-six years I've been renting property, I've been getting my properties inspected every year over there, and lo and behold, last year I find out that I don't really have to let the inspector in. And I'm only one of twenty percent that lets them in, so eighty percent don't let them in. The situation is, yeah, we get an inspector, we, we have the ordinances, we pay them, but who's going to enforce it? And, and that's where the problem is. I know over there also that some landlords are treated differently than other landlords, so it's a problem. It's a real problem. But the problem in this small town that we all love and we're, we're here, I mean, my kids grew up here, this is their town, this is my town, the quality of people is really going downhill. And that's, that's really, really related to the quality of housing. So I, I commend the, the inspections, I commend the ordinances. Some landlords won't because they don't want to be inspected. I'm in the funeral profession, I have a crematory, I've got inspectors around me all day long. I live with it, it's just the way it is, and if we didn't have it, God help what goes on out there. So that's the way I feel. I'd like to get a copy of the ordinance so to review that, to be able to come back next week and talk, because I would imagine that's when you're going to get most of the response. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. You're going to post this online?
We are, yeah, now that it's officially been read in, I can put it online.
You have an idea of when it'll be on?
Tomorrow. I can give you a paper copy for tonight, but I can put it on tomorrow.
Yeah. It'll get posted sometime tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Commissioner Warnock?
Yes.
If I would, one of the things I wanted to pass along to Mr. Ford, he and I have had some conversations about some of the issues over there, is that I also think this ordinance also spells out an appeals board. One of the things that I've always felt that the town of Rising Sun is lacking is more committees or groups, and you always have the issue of getting people to volunteer for it, but we need to have more citizen engagement on some of these items. And I'm used to working in communities where you have sort of quasi-advisory boards. And this ordinance does call for a code enforcement appeals board that I think would be ideal for, you know, I don't want to put Mr. Ford on the spot, but he, he's a good example of the type of people that we really should be getting on this board to one, on one hand, to have people who want to appeal a decision of a code officer coming to other residents in the community and making that appeal to them, not a bureaucrat, not a politician, not an employee. They'd be coming to other members of the community that are invested and are impartial to the issue. So that's the one thing I wanted to point out, is that this is an ordinance that has an opportunity for a lot of citizen engagement to help shape and guide it where it goes. So I wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
How long, talk about property maintenance in Sur, how long is that, that south coast area of Cherry Street, along the side there, there's mattresses, box springs, and whatever else?
Are you talking at the upper end where Mr. Ford's driveway is at?
Yes. From where the problem house was.
Yeah, it was picked up today.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. Now, in all fairness, we, we had to pick it up again.
Okay. So, if you don't mind me asking, because that is a question I had. Start your timer again if you'd like, but the question I have is, we talked about, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And I understand there was an ordinance in December that was implemented about maintenance of that type of thing, to give you guys some, some teeth to be able to do some things about that.
Yeah.
You commented to me that you didn't know anything was there, and that the rural wasn't anybody to inspect it to tell you it was there, but I had commented to you that all those mattresses were there.
Right.
And when one nineteen landlord showed up to start to clean out the, the people that just got arrested, that's where he put those mattresses also, that's where those extra mattresses came from.
Okay.
So they've been sitting there for two weeks, and I noticed that they got picked up at three o'clock today, and I was curious. So did the landlord get contacted? Was he asked to remove them, and he never, never did, or did just the town take the responsibility to?
They, they, let me answer you a question in reverse. They got picked up today at about quarter of eleven, because I went, I went over there to verify that they were still there.
Okay, and I was at town when I got back, and three o'clock, they were gone.
In this particular case, it's actually a breakdown on the trash hauler, that we made contact with the landlord last week about the repeated issues about the debris being put out there. In all honesty, he did call and ask for a bulk pickup. For whatever reason, the trash hauler did not pick it up on Friday. So we addressed that with the trash hauler yesterday, and instead of waiting till Friday, I just had our guys go over there and, and, and pick it up.
Okay, I cleared that up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Peterson, do you have a report tonight?
Yes.
The, there's a second presentation on the.
Oh, okay. On this?
There you go. All right, the, from the period of August ninth through August twenty-third, we've responded to a hundred and forty-five calls for service. That's down from last month, when we had approximately nearly three hundred. This month, we made four arrests for possession of heroin, two for destruction of property, four for theft, and one warrant service. There were thirty-eight traffic warnings written, six citations, and six parking tickets. There was eleven hours spent along Main Street for speed enforcement, five warnings were issued, and four citations. South Queen Street, there was nine hours spent, one citation, six warnings. In the Valley View Development, there was eleven hours of patrol spent there, five parking citations were issued. And that's pretty much the report for this period. A couple of things I want to remind you of, during the period, on the twenty-ninth of this month, school returns in session, and there's a ton of kids that will be walking to and from the middle school, so please pay attention to that. And lastly, Shop With A Cop will have a golf tournament, which is set for September first, am I correct?
Sixteenth.
September sixteenth. You can, if you're a golfer and would like to participate. September 16th. You can, if you're a golfer and would like to participate, the entry forms can be found on the website and on Facebook. It's a great program, and I hope that many people will participate. With that being said, that's my report, unless there's any questions. At Furnace Bay Golf, of course, down in Perriville. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Town administrator, do you have a report?
Yeah, there's a couple good things to talk about. I guess it's our last meeting, the Bigfoots reopened again. And from what I heard, the first day they were open, there were actually people on Facebook wondering if something had happened because they apparently had to take their phones off the hook because they could not keep up with the volume of people calling to try to get sandwiches. From a code enforcement standpoint, I want to thank the owners and the contractor who did the work down there. It was a very good professional job from beginning to end. The plumbers, the HVAC people, they were local people. They did a fantastic job. There was a little bit of a hiccup with the fire alarm company that was out of Baltimore. And there were some issues at the last minute there. But there's a lot of state of the art equipment in there that the owner has invested in, in terms of suppression and fire alarms and strobes and audible alarms to warn people. So I just, I want to thank the property owner for really putting a lot of effort into giving back to the community of very quality, rushed on, above and beyond the good food that they served, just the building itself. They were very conscientious in what they did, and I want to thank them for that. The, recently, we had the, I guess, it's, it's how you want to describe it, the reopening of a dollar store. In this case, it was Dollar Tree. We've had some people criticizing us lately because although it went from whatever it was before the Dollar Tree, and we announced that it was a new business, we were being criticized that it really technically wasn't a new business, and that they didn't really do anything on the inside of the building, but moved some things around on shelves. And that's not true at all. They built a, a new office in the area. They also constructed a walk-in or installed a walk-in freezer. And you folks saw the emails that I had back and forth in making sure they brought things up to code. They upgraded the fire suppression system in there. They are installing an automatic fire alarm system. They came in today to get the permit application for that. And they also installed emergency lighting. And they also are in the process of installing horns and strobes to warn people in the event of an emergency there. And one of the things I just want to throw out there from a code enforcement standpoint, that I often get, especially in that shopping center, I get this all the time with businesses, when I tell them they have to put emergency lighting in. And you wouldn't believe the amount of businesses in our town, they do not have emergency lighting in them, even though they are technically supposed to. And I always get looked at funny when I say, hey, you have to have emergency lighting in here. Well, why? I got all this picture plate glass window in the front of the store. It's, you know, you're going to be able to see. Well, people forget that when it gets dark at 4:30 in the middle of December or January, and your store is loaded with people, and for whatever reason, the power goes out, or, you know, something happens, it could be any number of things, people are going to panic. And so that's why it's important to make, make sure that aisleways and retail businesses are kept clear, and that there's emergency lighting. And, you know, imagine if you're an employee stocking or in the walk-in freezer at the Dollar Tree, the sprinkler system activates in the building, but because there was no fire alarm before you, and now listening to a headset, whatever, stacking things on the shelf, and you have no idea that everybody's already abandoned the building because something happened to it. So those are the, those are the things that we were able to upgrade. And those are, those are the advancements that we're bringing to the community. Not only to make it safe for pub, the public that's in there, but also the employees that are in there. We also have a very good lead on a business that is looking to relocate into the town of Rising Sun. It is a very reputable business. We've been trading blueprints and design concepts back and forth. The only reason why I'm always hesitant to say anything about it is those businesses don't necessarily want you to say anything until they do something formally, because they don't want the word getting out there on the street, and a competitor comes in and does something. But this, this is a good business that's looking to rehab an older building in the town of Rising Sun. So that's, that's a good thing. We also have two, pretty sure two properties are going to be annexing into the town of Rising Sun. Again, I, I'm not at liberty because they have not officially turned in any paperwork. Again, I don't want to create problems for them. But one of them is a business that's looking to expand their business and increase not only the number of buildings that are going to be on their property, but the number of employment opportunities for people in the town of Rising Sun. And this is all born out of infrastructure and investments that the town has been able to finally make in infrastructure. You know, we've talked about that during the budget process when you, again, I hate to beat a dead horse, but you know, the numbers don't lie in terms of what's been happening to assess values with that moratorium being in place for roughly 11 years now. So people are getting wind of these opportunities. We are fielding phone calls on a regular basis of, I want to get water, I want to get sewer here. So it requires investments on the part of the residents of the Rising Sun. Unfortunately, you know, the infrastructure is, is and has been in bad shape for many years, and the costs have gone up as the town has studied and studied and studied. But there is light at the end of the tunnel with new investments wanting to come into the town simply for that, for that reason. So that all should lead to improved quality of life. It goes back to a point that Mr. Ford made. If we, if we can provide better quality things and maintain better quality things, it attracts better quality people, businesses across the board. So there, there's light at the end of the tunnel here. So I just wanted to let you know with those development things that are happening. And that's all I have.
Thank you, town administrator. And I don't see anybody here from the Historical Preservation Commission or the Rising Sun Arts Alliance. Is there any old business to come before this board? Any new business? Skip the mayor's report, and Commissioner Othonryth.
Okay. At the last meeting, we, I, I moved to have some money approved for the repairs to the water main break in Louise Court, and also Ryan Drive. And we have a small stormwater area we're going to do some repairs to also. But to give you an update, the bid went out to a lot of the contractors we've used and was sent out. KCI prepared all this for us. Monday, we're going to have a pre-bid meeting. And let me just open my phone back up for the rest of the schedule. Sorry about that. Questions are due from the contractor September 7th. Final addendum will be issued September 8th. We'll have a bid opening on September 12th, award and recommendation on the 13th, and bid award also that day. And we hope that by the end of September, contractors can mobilize equipment and get in here and make those two repairs to that section. One, it's a double edged sword. A bad thing, you know, it's still sitting there, not repaired. But it takes time for that ground to dry out and settle, and you get those dips and indentations. So it's, it's better to have those happen before you come in there and spend the money. You just, it, you just got to be careful around it, and watch for brave kids that want to jump out there and do that stuff. So that is moving along quite quickly. And hopefully, every, you know, we've still got a lot of good warm weather left, September and October, and we should be able to get in there and take care of those. Last week, I met with some business owners and also met with some residents about issues they have in the town. And a lot of them had to do with property maintenance. Some of them were just the fact that weeds and bushes have grown over the summer, and we see them every day and don't realize they're blocking sidewalks, on ramps and off ramps for wheelchair accessibility. But one of the overriding comments that came out at the end, that I've talked with the chief about, and as you've seen, there's been enforcement on traffic. We do know with schools starting, we've got kids that are not going to be paying attention to what they're doing. They're going to be seeing their friends goofing around. So everybody, please be careful. Our police department is aware of issues that we have in town with traffic. And they're going to be, the chief has assured me that they'll be stepping up enforcement on that, as well as other issues, as the gentleman alluded to. We have a, throughout the state, it's no secret, not just our county, our town, the heroin problem. You see something, say something. They're using areas of high traffic to do deals because people don't, they don't look out of the, out of, out of place there. There's so many people moving around, parking lots, restaurants. They're not just doing back alley deals or out in the woods or something. They're doing them right under our noses. So when you're out doing your, running your errands and everything, be observant. Look for this stuff. And our officers want to know. And they stay very busy chasing this down. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCher.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. I'll be brief. Upcoming planning and zoning meetings, September 19th at 6:30 PM, November, and November 21st at 6:30 PM. That's all I have this evening.
Commissioner Shepard.
The only thing I had, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that school is starting Monday. So everyone, please pay attention in town. There's going to be a lot of kids walking back and forth. Just backing up what Alan said. So that's all I have for tonight.
And the movies in the park over, I guess Friday, was very successful over at Kilby Cream. We had, am I getting dinged out of the room? Man, I got three seconds. That was, that was brutal. We had, I, I don't know the exact count. It's actually kind of hard to count. There's a lot of kids moving around. It's like ants moving around when you're trying to count. But, um, you know, rough estimate would be well over 200. I mean, I, I was able to count 200. I might count a couple of kids a couple of times. But the, if you're familiar with the area over at Kilby's, from the ice cream shop to where the animals are, that whole area was completely full, all the way back to the fence. There was a guy feeding a cow ice cream while, while he was watching the movie. So it was kind of entertaining. But it was, we had a very good turnout for that movie. It was very successful. So the other thing we have is the stormwater management at Veterans Community Park. We're expecting our next meeting in September with our consultants on that. So we should be getting an update then. And, and, you know, the project should be, the, the engineering phases, I think, are starting to wrap up. And we should be starting to put together a plan for when the construction will begin and everything.
There's, there's two things that I missed in my notes here that I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
One of them is I was remiss in not congratulating Justin Holcomb on the opening of his business up on Colonial Way. That's another example of an abandoned, basically abandoned building there, and somebody coming in and renting it and investing some good money and cleaning it up. And if, Justin is a very valuable member to the community. He's made a lot of contributions to the Arts Alliance, so forth and so on. So he wants to be a, a good member of the community. And he's invested in the community and, and done a nice job in renovating that building up there. The other thing for the Board of Commissioners, and you reminded me when you talked about stormwater, there is a new regulatory change on the state level, that unfortunately, it's another one of those unfunded mandates, in which we now have MS4 stormwater requirements, enforcement requirements. So that's going to be a little bit interesting to see how we're supposed to be enforcing stormwater requirements on properties. Up to this point, we've always handed that off to the county to do that. They've done our plan review and, and taken care of that. But under the new legislation that we just got notified formally by MDE the other day, we are now responsible for some of that. Commissioner Othonryth, I've reached out to a town engineer, KCI, and they have someone who specializes in that, because they do the stormwater for the town of Elton. And so they are reviewing the legislation to see exactly what it is we have to start doing in the future. But it is an unfunded mandate. So.
Thank you, town administrator. And I believe Commissioner LaCher, you just mentioned the two upcoming meetings? Or, I know you mentioned at least the one. We have a meeting tomorrow night at 7:30. It's a special town meeting for water capacity upgrades. And then the next planning commission meeting is September 19th at 6:30. Labor Day, town hall is closed on Monday, Labor Day, September 5th. And with that, is there anything else to come before the board tonight? Hearing nothing else, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.